Hi, thank you for attending the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, April 9th, 2015, 7:30 Brisbane City Hall. We are currently waiting for a few more commissioners to establish a quorum. So we will start in a few minutes, about maybe five minutes or so. Thank you.
Right. Just a workshop. Yeah. Right. Yeah, I hadn't heard from anybody. So. That linked. Oh, that's that, no, that's the, that's the blow up. Well, that's that, okay. At least we have that. Why don't we go ahead and if you, if it's not working, that's fine. I think Julie can probably manage that. Right. You want to make a couple of calls for me? You bet. Yeah, I'll go do that. So you want to center that on the screen and see if you can zoom in more. Yeah.
Are we going to start right now? Okay. Your son's trying to.
He wants the punch.
His homework.
Thank you again for your attendance at the Brisbane Planning Commission regular meeting of Thursday, April. Since we don't have a quorum, we are going to move right on to the workshop for short-term vacation rentals in Brisbane. Thank you to everyone for bearing with us. We will go ahead and start. So why don't we go ahead and review what we talked about at the last workshop? So at the first workshop on March 12th, last month, we had a pretty good conversation. Attendees at the workshop had a variety of opinions, some who did not support short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods, ranging to those who thought they should be a permitted use without any regulation. So most opinions at that workshop lay somewhere in between those two ends of the spectrum. And staff has pulled out these discussion themes that kind of touch on points from all perspectives that were raised. Particularly the respect of everyone's rights, that means neighbors, property owners, and long-term residents. Protection of existing neighborhood character, mitigating any negative impacts of short-term rentals, and the fact that short-term rentals, if legalized, should benefit homeowners, not businesses or corporations, and that if regulations do end up being adopted, that they should be realistic and enforceable. At the conclusion of the discussion on March 12th, the commission decided to continue this discussion to look at examples of regulations in other districts and ask staff to follow up on some other topics, including our community survey. So the community survey was closed on March 27th after being open for about a month. We received 188 survey responses and multiple comments emailed in or comments on other websites from residents. The final tally is, again, relatively even. This did not change much from our progress update. So respondents are fairly split on whether or not they support legalization of these kinds of uses. So on the next page, we'll run through each question. The first, community concerns. This hasn't, also not changed much from the last time we updated you on this. Again, the primary concern with legalizing short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods is the impact to neighborhood character. Many people see it as inviting a transient population into a very close, tight-knit community. Other concerns include impact to property values, that homes would not be maintained, neighborhood safety, noise from loud gatherings, et cetera. Most of the rest, the common thread in all, most comments were concerns with the difficulty of regulating the use in general. And we'll go to the next slide. And again, potential benefits has remained pretty consistent since we started reaching out. The most common reason to support these for people that do is that they could provide supplemental income to homeowners. Many people also supported the right to, property owners or permanent residents to operate on their, in their home as they see fit. Other benefits include increased tourism revenue, neighborhood safety, and the opportunity to legalize an existing activity. Again, in support range, there are those who think it should be a completely discretionary process, requiring a special use permit from the commission to regulating it without, or permitting it without any sort of regulation. And this next series of questions were geared towards hypothetical situation of if the city chose to move forward with regulations. Most respondents supported permitting rentals if they complied with defined standards such as minimum parking requirements. Fewer respondents, but a significant amount, supported a discretionary process with Planning Commission approval. Just, we'll take a little break here. Sorry. In terms of limiting the number of short-term rental permits, this was, there wasn't as big of a majority here, but most people thought that, no, if they were legalized, there should be no cap on how many were permitted in the city. In regards to residency requirements, a significant majority of respondents did support limiting the amount of time that a unit could be offered for rent, or requiring that the person operating it is a permanent resident. So that could be a property owner or long-term lease, let's see. In terms of how long they should be required to stay, comments ranged anywhere from one month to 11 months out of the year. In terms of the kind of housing short-term rentals were allowed, there was no overwhelming majority, but most respondents did support single-family homes, with second dwelling units coming in second, and a relatively even split for multifamily and duplex units. So now we'll move on to what examples that we can draw from in this discussion. We researched dozens of ordinances, but the ones represented here are mainly chosen because of their cities with primary residential character. They're smaller cities out of the cities that are regulating this use, and the components of the regulations kind of mirrored what we heard in terms of concerns from the commissioners in community. So these cities are St. Helena in Napa County, Petaluma in Sonoma County, and the county of Santa Cruz. And San Francisco's ordinance is used as a comparison. It's been a topic of conversation since we brought this up. However, it doesn't have all the components that staff really sees as being responsive to the Brisbane, to Brisbane community members' desires, but it's here so we can look at it. So let's move in. Oh, no, keep this page, sorry. So as you can see, there's two primary types of permits process that these ordinances share. One is discretionary, so meaning they have to go to a public hearing. This always involves public notice. It allows for public input. It can be with a use permit or other discretionary permit from, from the commission or zoning administrator. To a process that's more ministerial, where staff would be administering the permit, typically there would be defined standards that the application would have to show compliance with. So this would include parking, limiting, if, if the ordinance limits it to what kind of unit it could be in. That would be all verified through a sort of checklist. So this kind of shows the range in the permitting types. All of the ordinances surveyed do require notice to neighbors, and this depends on the kind of approval process, discretionary versus ministerial. In a discretionary process, notices are given neighbor before the hearing, obviously, to get their input. And in a ministerial process, they do notice neighbors within a certain range to inform them the permit was approved and give them information such as management, who they can contact if there's ever an issue. In terms of residency requirements, both St. Helena and San Francisco's ordinances restrict who can apply for rental, for short-term rental permit. St. Helena, it has to be the property owner. And in San Francisco, it has to be the permanent resident, which again could be the owner, long-term renter, et cetera. The other ordinances don't necessarily restrict who can apply, but do touch on how many days the unit can be rented as a whole unit. So you'll see here, it's Petaluma and San Francisco, they refer to them as non-hosted units, and those are limited in both cases to 90 days per year. It's unsure how that exactly will be monitored or enforced, but, but it is their component of that regu, of those regulations. So, you can leave that up there still. In terms of restricting the type of housing that short-term rentals can be in, we didn't find very many ordinances that did this. St. Helena's, as you can see, it restricts it to only single-family homes. They specifically, in the ordinance, do not permit accessory dwelling units or granny units from being used for this purpose. And the last column here, inspections. Most ordinances require self-certification. There's no actual inspection that's conducted of these properties. The applicant essentially signs the form saying, yes, I, I will abide by these safety, health and safety regulations. And then the only one that requires inspection is St. Helena, which is performed by their fire department. So now we can switch slides. On-site management is a component of most short-term rental ordinances and most of the ones we're showing you here. This would be a designated person within, either living within a certain distance or who can respond within a certain amount of time if there is an immediate issue that needs to be resolved. And most ordinances do either have this information available publicly in some sort of database, or distribute it to the adjacent neighbors for their use and reference. There's also many components of the different ordinances that together try to ensure that neighborhood compatibility is protected. So these are listed here. There's parking requirements, occupancy limits, which are meant to control how many people can actually stay per room, which again might be difficult to actually enforce that. Noise, all ordinances require compliance with adopted noise regulations, just like any other use that would be going on. In terms of business licenses and TOT, all ordinances typically require operators to have a business license and to pay transient ori, uh, sorry, transient occupancy taxes, which are, as hotels are assessed. You know, that's a way to recognize that this is a commercial use essentially that's operating in the home. And then in terms of permit revocation or penalties, most ordinance, most zoning ordinances and municipal codes already have built-in methods to revoke permits or enforce any sort of violations of permits that are issued. So those would be honored regardless of what the permit was. So we can go on to the next slide. So in addition to researching some other ordinances, for reference, the commission did ask to follow up on a few topics. Homeowners' insurance. We were asked to investigate how this could impact a homeowner's insurance policy. Obviously, each policy is different, coverage varies, but basic homeowner's policies do not cover activities that are associated with commercial businesses in a home, and this would cover short-term rentals. So some companies, some major insurance companies do offer products specific for short-term rentals. There's also landlord insurance, that's a very common product, but isn't always applicable in this kind of circumstance where perhaps you're renting a room, or you're not present in the home, it's only being offered a few days a year. HomeAway and Airbnb, who are hosting platforms, they actually have their own insurance products available. They're fairly limited in terms of liability, but they do provide property damage. And then just a kind of reminder, the city doesn't bear liability for activities that happen on private property. So this is more of an informational item for homeowners. And the other item we followed up on was the response of the hospitality industry to short-term rental legalization. So the, there are several advocacy groups for the Hospitality Association that have been very active in legislation at a statewide level, as well as more locally. So the California Lodging and Hospitality Association, which is the biggest state organization, they have voiced their support for competition in whatever form it may be. They're advocating for a level playing field, which basically translates to short-term rentals have to be taxed. The San Francisco Hotel Council, which is obviously based in San Francisco locally, they confirm this statewide policy stance, and they were quite active in the formation of San Francisco's ordinance. So again, they've confirmed, we just want a level playing field, that's their line. And then the other issue staff wanted to, to highlight was that we do have in our code a process whereby residents can get a permit to operate small-scale businesses from their home. So this is referred to as home occupation permit. This is a permit granted by the planning director. The permit's only granted if it meets certain performance standards to make sure that it's a compatible use in that neighborhood. But we thought it'd be a good idea to highlight that, just in case the commission decides to move forward in, in that manner. So at this point, the commission has a few options. If we move to the not permitted, that's really no change. No changes would be made to the code. It would continue to be a illegal use in residential districts. The next two options, if legalization was the path forward, would be the discretionary permit process or ministerial. And you can see that they share kind of in the middle, different regulations or standards that we can require permits to comply with. The only difference really is that the decision-making body would be, it would be discretionary process. The commission would be hearing permit applications versus staff processing them more administratively. The last option would be permitting it by right in residential districts without collection of TOT, considering it a residential use. I don't think we've heard overwhelming support for that option, but.
Can you describe what TOT is for everyone?
It's transient occupancy tax.
Thank you.
So in terms of next steps. Staff is requesting some direction in terms of how this process is going to move forward, whichever way that you decide. And of course, we'd like to open up to any questions and then to community discussion.
Should we open the meeting first or just do this? Yeah.
So did, did the commissioners have any questions before we open it up to the public?
Excuse me, through the, through the chair?
Yes.
Now that we do have a quorum, we might want to officially start the meeting, backtrack and officially start the meeting, if that would be.
Okay, as opposed to continuing the workshop?
I think we could at least get the roll call and formally amend the agenda to reflect what we're doing.
So now that we have a quorum, we would like to start the meeting officially. Call to order, please.
Commissioner Doe?
Present.
Commissioner Minier?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
The record show Commissioner Reinhardt is absent.
So we would need a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
I motion to the agenda of April 9th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I would suggest you actually amend the agenda to start with the workshop that we've kind of already commenced.
Before we move on to the consent calendar. Okay. So given that we were short the quorum earlier, we will, we proceeded with the workshop, which required no quorum, and so we're going to move that up and above the consent calendar. Before moving to have the, or requesting that the consent calendar be adopted, is there anyone here who needs to have any item discussed or removed?
No.
No, we go ahead and, and amend the, what the staff suggested.
Okay, so that, that was done. So now we just need to have a, I would like to see if we need to, can we go ahead and adopt the consent of challen, uh, calendar?
Through, through the chair, if you've accepted the change, you would just continue with the workshop, then when the workshop's closed, move on to the consent calendar, oral communications, et cetera.
As opposed, okay.
So I, I make a motion to, to adopt the agenda by changing the workshop G, move it in front of item D.
Okay. So, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we will continue with the workshop. So the commissioners have no questions for the half?
Well, I came, kind of, I didn't get my chance to review it. I was not feeling good for the last several days. That's why I almost didn't make it today.
Thank you for that.
So I, what I like to do is I will quickly review it and then maybe after the public hearing, I will ask some questions to the staff, if you.
Thank you, Commissioner Minier. Okay. So would Mr. Peter McGurty like to speak?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Peter McGurty. I live at 401 Alvarado Street. I'm here tonight to speak. Well, I spoke last time against having these short-term rentals in a residential neighborhood. I still am opposed to it. I think it's going to change the, what our neighborhoods are like, what this beautiful town is like. But that being said, it appears that there are many people, and the city staff included, has put a lot of work into how to regulate this. So if we're going to regulate it, I'd like to have, put an opinion how to, with my opinion is how to regulate it. That's okay.
Absolutely.
If we are going to let this go through, I believe it should be regulated as a conditional use permit. Municipal Code, Chapter 17.40. It should go through the use permit process, the application process, and like, things like in the application process, the project description, part of the application list, all the third-party booking agencies they'll use. And the reason I asked to have this put in there is that this could be a way for the city to easier track the traffic coming in and out through all this. And 17.40.030, strike owner of property and leasee, et cetera, and replace with permanent resident. So I think only a permanent resident should be able to have these businesses in Brisbane so they have a dog in the fight and we don't have people buying property just to build little hotels. In 17.4.040, notice at a public hearing, I believe it should be a direct mailing. I don't know, under Chapter 17.54, if that's true or not, but if it is, I think the neighbors should get a direct mailing, knowing there's going to be a Planning Commission meeting about an Airbnb or whatever these short-term rentals is going to be in their neighborhood. And then under the rights of 17.040.070, the city has a right and should impose what I think is some reasonable attachments to these permits. I think they should first have a fire department inspection for not only safety regulations, but also occupancy ratings, like they do for all other buil, businesses and other buildings. They should have a mandatory off-street parking for the customers and the business owners, and this should be in the application for the use permit. In the use permits, as you know, they have to show a map of, of their land and how it's going to be used, and they can't say, I have one parking spot, and, and that's where the customer's going to be. Well, that's the parking spot where the person who owns the business is probably going to park. So they've got to show where they're going to have these extra off-street parking. I believe there should be a density limit. I don't know about you, but if we do permit these, I don't want more than one of them on my block. I mean, then I'll be living on Bay Shore Boulevard. I think there should be a limit in how many permits you give out a year to spread it out so other people can enjoy this or not enjoy it. I mean, I'm not going to enjoy it, but other people can do it. And I believe there should be an eight-week aggregate rental per unit. So you have to live in your home for 10 months, and then you get eight weeks aggregate, however you want to break it up, one week here, one week there, or two months in a row, you could rent out a short-term rental. I also believe, like the other cities, that there should be some kind of manager to respond within 30 minutes to the site. There should be a public phone number, so if there are problems with the property. I believe that the city should collect the hotel tax, and it should be paid by the business owners to the city directly. So these third parties will not have a relationship with the city. These people want to start a business in the city of renting out their homes, they have to pay the taxes to the city. These third-party, these Airbnbs, they're, they're just booking agents. That's all they are. And I think one way of tracking how this goes on is you make these business owners make quarterly reports to the city. And in the quarterly report, what, what third-party booking agencies are using, how many people have they rented out to, and how often have the people stayed? So every three months, you get these reports from the people you've already given permits to. This may make it easier for your staff to go on Airbnb, see who's renting out, and if these are the people who are reporting it, who have the permits or doing what they are saying they're doing, and also to spot the people who don't have permits and who are doing what could be, at this point, an illegal activity. And that's all I have.
A lot of thought.
Thank you.
Very, very good points.
Thank you for your time.
You put a lot of thought into it. Thank you for sharing that. Would anyone else like to address the commission? Is staff for it? Step forward.
Hello, Colleen Mack on 161 San Bruno Avenue. I want to compliment Mr. McGurty. He was extremely thorough and echoed a lot of things I was going to say, so it shortens my list. People that have businesses are often used to filling out board of equalization reports, so I really liked his idea of the quarterly report to the city. And also in terms of the enforcement, limiting the number of permits granted, so that city staff aren't burdened with checking Airbnb and all these third-party agencies constantly. If you know who's supposed to be renting, it's a very simple process. One thing I would add to the fire department inspection, I'm still really concerned about potential liability to the city, especially if you permit them. I would require a, an inspection of the premises for code enforcement, because someone could easily subdivide part of their home into smaller units for rental, and they may not meet current code, and that could, in fact, put the city at risk. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Please step forward.
Hi. Hi, my name's Kim Foleen. I live at 815 Humboldt. I also want to compliment Mr. McGurty for echoing the same things.
Let us speak up a little bit, so people...
I also want to compliment Mr. McGurty for echoing the same concerns I have. Just bottom line, I think the homeowners that are running these short-term rentals should meet all hotel building standards, including fire codes, just like commercial hotels do. Also, I believe they also must provide adequate off-street parking for the homeowners and the guests, so that the public safety vehicles may access all the narrow streets in Brisbane. We live on a part of Humboldt where our street is only 13 feet wide in front of our house, and many out-of-towners often park there blocking traffic. And, bottom line, I just don't, I think they should not be allowed to evade regulations governing, governing the hospitality industry. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Is this will be the last in the series of discussion on this, or we have to close the workshop today?
Well, if there's only a workshop, if the commission feels the need for a further workshop, that would be fine. If ultimately this results in a proposal to amend the zoning ordinance in some fashion, that would initiate a very formal public hearing, so again, everybody would have the opportunity to participate in a formal public hearing on the same issue, you know, with regulations or proposed regulations in front of them. So, it's really up to the commission's discretion.
So, do we have to make a decision today whether we allow this or not, or what...
Actually, you're not in a position to make any kind of decision. All you're, we really need is some guidance from the commission as to what, you know, direction we're headed into the future, whether you want us to start formulating some regulations for future consideration, or if there's more research you want done, or again, you know, if you don't want to move forward with anything, that's a recommendation you would make to the council. So, those are all sort of in the realm of what you would sort of give us some guidance on.
So, should we close the discussion right now and, or is it, as a workshop, we don't need to close?
You don't need to. There's no formal, there's no formal anything going on here. This is just really a, sort of an informal discussion.
All right. So, I'd like to start first.
Very good.
I really don't want to move forward on this at this point, because it is such a close tie, that I think we need to take it to a public vote. I think we should put this on the ballot, see if there's enough people who sign up, to put it on the public ballot, and have the citizens vote whether they want to proceed or not. I just feel that, that it's evenly divided in this survey, so, and at that point, if the answer is no, then, you know, more people feel that they don't want to move forward, then, then we shouldn't move forward. And that's my feeling. I know, I don't know if that's how some other towns, do you know if that's, do you either, I know in San Francisco they did, but I don't know about other...
Well, in San Francisco, it's adopted by their Board of Supervisors, so, much like their city council. In terms of a vote, like in a general election, I didn't see any ordinances, that's not to say none of them were adopted that way, but not in the research we did.
I think we can make the recommendation to the council, and whatever the council decides is up to the council. If they want to go, go ahead with their own position on that, that's up to them. But I think the, if that's a suggestion you want to make, then that's one of the suggestions.
Well, it's my suggestion. I don't know how others feel, but I just, you know, from the survey, it's split evenly.
Yeah.
I see that even those who are opposed to it are sitting there saying, "Well, you know, if we're going to have it, then let's do this, and this, and this, and this." But I think at this point, we need to find out whether the city's actually for it or against it, and I think that resides amongst the residents of the city.
Okay. My opinion on this. I looked at it, and I did do a lot of study as to what other towns have done, and in my opinion, Brisbane is not ready for this. The reasons being that we still have a lot of non-conforming structures in this city, and we also have the topography constraint in terms of the parking. Also, the, there's a strong feeling of keeping the small town, you know, you don't, we don't want too much traffic here. Majority of the citizens like that way. And there are a lot of issues in terms of not only the fire safety, but the safety of the structure itself. And if somebody is going to rent this thing, in order to bring it to the current standards will be very important, because the thing is, the city will be liable in case somebody get hurt. So, I don't know whether the people really realize as to how much is involved in terms of bringing it to the current 2015 standards. That means they have to do lots of work within the building itself, you know, installing the smoke detectors, and maybe needed new wiring, maybe needed new plumbing. Whatever the new standards are, they have to follow that in order to bring it up to the, up to the code. And I think we have to explore as to what's involved in terms of the cost for doing all this, and how many people will be willing to do that. Right now, the general feeling is that, look, my house is available, I can go ahead and rent it. That's not, that's not the way it's going to work, in my mind. I think if you want to rent, rent the place, it has to be up to the current standard. It's just like any other major renovation we do inside, inside the house, we have to bring it to the current code. And that's the same thing will be involved here, and I'll be surprised, majority of the homeowners will back off when they find out how much it's going to cost, because it's, the, a lot of structures here, a lot of buildings are pretty old, and they don't meet the current standards at all. And it's not like you just go ahead and advertise and bring somebody home, because now you are in a business, and in order to do the business, you have to follow the current state standards. So, I think we need to explore that in terms of what will be the cost impact on the people who want to do it, because we don't want to surprise them, and we don't want to find out that the, all of a sudden, the people are complaining that, "Oh, again, the city is asking all this, and this is, you know, the usual stuff, that the city hall is trying to prevent us from doing that." So, I think we need to really focus on what we are looking for in terms of a minimum standard for a facility or house that's going to provide that service. Also, the parking issue has to be resolved. As is, we have a lot of parking problems in this, in the town, and how this is going to impact, you know, we always have a constant dialogue about the parking in every street we have, and the streets are pretty narrow. And also, the people coming at these facilities, they will be blocking the driveways and blocking the streets when they're going in and out. How much that's going to impact the overall traffic pattern? And this concept is still fairly new. I think, when did the San Francisco adopted this? About last year sometime, or?
In fall of last year.
Fall of last year. So, there's still a lot of, lot of things we are learning, and we, as a small town, I don't think we should jump into that at this point. And again, 50% of the people, 51% of the people thinking that it's not a good idea. And if you do want to, if you do want to pursue with that, then I think we should get a better handle on majority of the people in the town as to how they're, they're going to take this whole, whole concept. And we should somehow put a cost figure as to how much it's going to cost to bring the, the house or facility to the standard. Then, at that time, if you take the survey again, people will realize that it's going to cost me $20,000 or $10,000 to fix that. Is it worth it? And that way, we will get a true, you know, feeling as to whether they, they still want to do it or not. So, I, I think that at this point, I agree with the Commissioner Parker, that the vote is too close, and if you go ahead and approve, and decide that we want to go forward with that, I think it's a little premature. Also, I was looking at the potential benefit, and one of the major one is supplemental income for the homeowners, and I think that's the driving force for the people, but if they find out then how much it costs to maintain it, and also, we have to have a standard to make it, that the homeowner should comply with, just like the hotels have. It has to be maintained in certain condition, so that, you know, we don't have any kind of a safety concern, not only that, but the security of the neighborhood. So, that, that also, I don't think the people consider that when, when this potential benefits, you know, this was put in, in the survey. They thought that, "I have a house, and I can just go ahead and get, take, get the money," you know, and that's what I'm feeling this survey is all about. But in order to do the true survey, I think we need to put some cost figures, we need to put what are the specific requirements for, if somebody wants to do that, what the city will require, what kind of permitting process will be involved, and all that, so that the people know that this is going to be upfront thing, and this is what ongoing activity I have to do, and how much, how many weeks in a, in a year I can, I can really, you know, rent this place. And with that in mind, whether it will be, let's say, eight weeks in a, in a year, that was suggested, then, is it worth spending that kind of money to get eight weeks of rent from the short-term rental? So, that kind of information should be provided to the, to the, to the citizens before we go ahead and do the survey. I think the survey is not truly showing what exactly is involved in this particular ordinance.
Through the chair, maybe just sort of, again, talk about the point of the survey. You know, there are no regulations, there are no rules, there's nothing to tell people, these are the rules. If there were to be rules, that would be part of your job, is to develop those. So, we're not going to survey on hypothetical, hypothetical sets of regulations and rules. It was really just to kind of get a community, one raised community awareness of the issue, and get some very preliminary community feedback. That was really the intent of the survey, nothing more, nothing less. You can use it for whatever purpose, you can take it as seriously or lightly as you like.
Well, I understand this preliminary survey was done for, for that reason, but I think the, before we go and spend all the time to go, go ahead and try to adopt this, we had to make the community know what's involved, you know, and otherwise, we will be spending all this time, and then we went ahead and approved this particular ordinance, and then we find out that people are complaining, the citizens are, that there's no benefit for me if I were to spend that kind of money to, to fix my, my property. So, we have to give them the true picture, and then we can get the true idea as to whether they really want, want it or not. And as far as the, the, our topography and our street structure here, it would be very difficult to accommodate additional, additional traffic here, as is, we are struggling with the parking requirements and all that. And our, a lot of our homes are pretty old, they don't meet any kind of recent, you know, standards. So, I will suggest that, at this point, I will say that we are not ready for that, and if you, if you do want to go ahead with this amendment, then I think the putting in the ballot might be one way to really, truly figure out what, what the people, whether the people want it or not. And before we put it in the, in the ballot, we have to do some kind of a preliminary study to show what's involved, how much, how much work need to be done to bring it up to the code and all that. So, that way, it will be fair game for everyone.
Did you have any more?
I have to say, I agree. I don't think that this town is really structured to have a bed and breakfast industry. There's certainly a lot of homes that have secondary units. I don't know how much they're being utilized and how much they aren't. But the roads are very, you know, very small, the fire department can get up and down them with difficulty. If we have the, the same people who come in and live there, they, they kind of understand how to maneuver around town, and they know how to, to, to park, you know, they know their neighbors, they know, you know, they kind of get an idea of how to accommodate it. Some of these roads are really, I, I cannot believe that people actually are comfortable with the parking at all. So, so that concerns me. I am concerned that if we move ahead, I think we can just say we're not ready. I, I feel that, that we don't actually, I agree with you, this is new, and, and I think we should look at how things work out in some other, other towns.
Also, the cities like San Francisco and Napa and all those places, they have a lot of resources. They have a big public works department, and they have a lot of, a lot of revenue coming from different sources. Brisbane doesn't have all that, and in order to reinforce that, I think the, the city will be burdened with a lot more work, and I don't know whether, how much benefit the city will get out of that. So, that's, that's another, you know, concern I have, that this is not a San Diego, or San Francisco, or Santa Helena, where people, a lot of people go there for this. This will be basically for, and I, I wouldn't be surprised that, basically, it will be driven by people who work in the, in the Santa Clara County, you know, the valley, those transients, they come to work for the Google or somebody, then they probably like to stay here. But again, they will, they will, we will have the issues in terms of getting, getting them to the work, which means they will go through our roads. That means it will be more congested, the streets will be more congested, there will be more traffic. So, at this point, I think the, we are, I'm not ready to really give any directions.
What about you?
So, hearing that, I, I wanted to, first of all, recognize the staff's hard work. We really appreciate your going through two workshops and having over a month and, a month and however many days of the survey. But looking at the survey responses, we have 188 out of what our population's 4,200. That's 1/20. That's one-twentieth of our population. And if you look at the competing interests, the community concerns are changed neighborhood character and the potential benefits, which is the supplemental income for homeowners, which I think it says a lot about the people who are vocalizing on the issue, but it also says a lot about the people who are currently silent on the issue. And because the major impact to the change neighborhood character affects so much more than one hundred eighty-eight people, I'm not comfortable moving forward with saying that we're ready, the planning commission, or at least as a commissioner. I'm ready to make any recommendations as to moving forward, yes or no, and to actually asking the staff to do more work on potential ordinances or drafting ordinances on pretty much hypotheticals. With that said, I think there's a recognition that this activity is a pre-existing activity. So that is not something that we can ignore. And I am not quite sure what the best route to deal with that current situation is, other than to get a better handle on how much of that activity is going on and to what degree, and to investigate further best responses or possible responses. Because if the activity is already existing, first of all, we can't ignore it. Second of all, it does demand some sort of a response. I'm not sure if that response is something that we're, in fact, actually, I retract that. I am sure at this point, we are not ready to deal with that response because I don't, I don't feel like I have a good handle on that. So I am in agreement with my fellow commissioners that the planning commission is not in a position to make any sort of recommendations, although the staff does request, I guess, further direction. And I would have to concur that it would be something, I think ultimately, either further, further study and/or some sort of direction from the city council as to how we should proceed as a city.
What I would suggest is, again, this wasn't advertised as a meeting for the planning commission to take any sort of action and even making a recommendation one way or the other to the councils in action. So I would suggest we come back in two weeks with this as a business item, probably old business or new business. There'll be a recommendation that the, the planning commission can formally take a recommendation at that point or make a recommendation to the council. And again, based on the testimony this evening, I think we're very clear where you're headed. So then you'll be formal, the public will again have notification of that upcoming meeting and we can go ahead and formalize, you can formalize your recommendation to the council at that point.
Now, if the council does decide to go forward with that, then in my, in my opinion, the best approach will be discretionary permit. That's the approach I will take. But at this point, I'm not suggesting that we should go forward with it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your attendance. With that, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
I motion that we accept the consent calendar as is.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're moving on to oral communications. Would anyone from the audience like to address the commission on any items not on the agenda? No? Okay. We will move on to written communications. I have here the, an invitation from the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust of San Mateo County, otherwise known as HART, a magazine for April 2015 for Western City. And an email from Carolyn Tune, from, in, CEO Carolyn Tune, from Michael Rush regarding the advisory body members posting on cities' social media sites. Does anybody else have any? Yeah, I just received that now. Any other written items?
Not that I know of.
No? Moving on to new business, public hearing zoning text amendment, RZ dash one dash one five, to amend Brisbane Municipal Code Title Seventeen, Chapter Seventeen Point Three Two, Section Seventeen Point Three Two pertaining to wireless telecommunications facilities.
This request is to amend the zoning ordinance and required to comply with new rules adopted by the Federal Communications Commission. This is regarding the application of existing federal laws, the Communications Act and the Spectrum Act, that govern the installation and use of wireless telecommunications facilities nationwide. The new FCC rules pertain to the timeframes for which municipalities must complete review of requests to construct new facilities or modify existing facilities. These new rules also define certain key terms related to wireless telecommunications facilities that were previously undefined. And lastly, they also require that cities adopt a non-discretionary or building permit approval process for certain minor modifications to existing facilities that don't substantially change their physical dimensions. In determining when a change may be considered a substantial change, the rules clarify that any change to a facility needs to be considered cumulatively, so compared against the original approval. This allows local governments to prevent separate and cumulative minor modifications that, when taken as a whole, would result in a substantial change to the facility. Our existing regulations for these facilities are in the municipal code, Chapter Seventeen Point Three Two Oh Three Two. The ordinance was adopted in two thousand and five and establishes two classes of discretionary permits. An administrative permit from the zoning administrator. This is for certain limited types of facilities such as installation of new antennas, co-location of equipment, self-facilities, or expansion of an existing support structure. A use permit from the planning commission is required for any other action not subject to an administrative permit, such as a new facility. All decisions and hearings related to the administrative permit or use permit review are publicly noticed to adjacent properties. The draft ordinance before you tonight proposes to amend the current code to allow building permit approval for minor modifications to existing wireless telecommunications facilities consistent with the FCC rules. Specifically, under subsection B, the ordinance proposes new definitions of relevant terms, including minor modification and substantial modification. It also changes the existing definition of wireless telecommunications facility to reflect the updated definition provided by the FCC. These definitions are specific and tailored, consistent with the FCC rules. Further, subsection C is proposed to be amended to clarify that applications for minor modifications are subject only to building permit approval. Staff wants to emphasize that no changes are proposed to the existing ordinance's limitations on location of wireless facilities or to the review and approval process for projects that don't qualify for a building permit. So anything substantially changing an existing facility or new facility. These proposed amendments are the minimum necessary to ensure compliance with federal regulations. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the commission adopt the draft resolution before you to recommend approval of the draft ordinance to the city council. I'll take any questions if you have any.
What is the significant difference between what we do now and with the FCC rule?
So essentially, the way we regulate telecommunications facilities now, regardless of what they're proposing, if it's a modification or a new facility, we have a discretionary permit process. So either the administrative permit for more minor applications, which is acted on by the zoning administrator, or a use permit from the planning commission, as you guys have seen before. In FCC new rules, they require that a certain class of minor changes to existing facilities not go through any discretionary process. So it would only be subject to a building permit. It wouldn't require administrative or use permit approval. And those, if you look at the definitions section, it's very specific what modifications are considered minor or not. And those are from the FCC rules directly. There's not a lot of ambiguity there. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do on H one ten. It says for wireless communicate, telecommunications towers outside of public right-ofways. I'm, I'm just confused about that language.
These towers can be installed on private property, so some can be installed within public right-ofway or they can be installed on private property. So that's, that's the distinguishing.
Now, do we have to meet and to comply with the FCC? Because if, if our standards are more stringent than the, the feds or state, then...
We have to follow the FCC regulations.
Because like state, we have that, that option. That cities, cities can have the...
Understand, more strict. No, that's not an option in this particular situation.
Okay. So then we don't have any choice? Then go ahead and approve it.
I guess if it's put that way.
Yeah, because the thing is, our hands are tied. So all we have to do is make a motion and get it done.
No?
Okay, I make a motion to approve this modification.
This is a public hearing through the chair, so you may want to open.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just kidding.
So I just, a question for clarification. So the recommendation from FCC, so how much of the language is lifted directly from FCC regs?
So if you go to page H one ten in the redlining, the definition of under substantial modification, so A, B, C, D through F, those are all fairly direct from the FCC regulations. And again, it's because they are so specific. They would, you know, we don't have a lot of discretion in, in those. We do, the terms minor modification and substantial modification are kind of a unique term. The FCC uses different, different terms, but it's something that the city staff thought was a little more easy to implement and distinguish from one another. But other than that, almost all the language is as required by the FCC.
Okay, thank you. So would anyone from the audience like to address us about the FCC regulations? Step forward.
Hi, my name is Debbie Horn and I live on four five one Mariposa. So I'm, I mostly have some questions about this because I'm new to Brisbane and I don't know what the existing ordinance is and, and, but I do have some history of moving from an area where we had what we call antenna alley, where a lot of private homeowners, for the same reasons as people want to do Airbnbs, would want to put antennas up on their private properties. And they get income from that. And so I don't, I don't know how that works here in Brisbane, if that's taxed as a business. But again, just like Airbnb, it's one of those things that if all of my neighbors want to put antennas up, the FCC is very clear that you can't talk about harms as far as health, EMFs, safety, those kinds of things. But you can talk about the residential character of the neighborhood and maintaining the character of the neighborhood. So as far as I'm concerned, these antennas go up on private property and the people that own those homes get income from that. So I don't know what, can I ask a question? So, so, I'm sorry. I'm new. So, so is this, do we?
I, I can, I can address what you've already brought up. So our existing ordinance prohibits wireless facilities in residential districts, as well as within a certain radius of residential districts, six hundred feet. So where the facility, the facilities are not permitted essentially in a residential neighborhood. So there's one...
So all facilities are antennas? Because I know, I see a big antenna.
An antenna would, is defined as a, well, if someone has a, you know, dish on their home, that's a private use. But our ordinance does specify if it's a commercial, sorry, I can't find the definition immediately, but it does differentiate between antennas and transmission facilities for commercial purposes versus a dish. It would, it would prevent homeowners from...
What's the position of FCC on that?
No position, they don't want to stop. They want antennas up everywhere.
But if you're to comply with FCC, then, then we cannot be more stringent.
Oh, no, planning commissions can do all kinds of things.
Yeah, I know, but that's what my question was.
The regulations, the FCC regulations allow the city to regulate by zone. They do not prohibit the city from regulating by zone.
That's the clarification I wanted.
So one more question if I may. So if it's on a commercial property that's not within six hundred feet of a, a home, is that taxed? Because they're making a lot of money for that, so.
I don't know that ordinance touches on that.
We can look into that, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
From my past experience as a planning commissioner, we had few of those applications came before us. And in fact, one of them was to install a antenna at the city hall. And we had a pretty long discussion about the whole issue of high towers and all that. And believe me, majority of the time, we didn't accept the proposal and they had to go back. And sometimes they wanted to raise the, the height also because they, more carriers want to go to the, on the same tower. And I think we, we turned that down also, as far as I remember. That was about five, six years ago. So in, in this town, there aren't very many antennas, you will not see here.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that after the FCC, the people will not...
Right, they want to pave the way for more. So I just want to suggest to the commission that maybe take a look at what antennas we do have, what, what is in the city and, and what is the income that the private property owners are getting and that it's, I always think it's good for the city to generate more revenue.
I don't, I don't think there is any in the private property in the city.
It could be commercial as well.
I mean, I'm not in a commercial property, I don't think.
Well, there's certainly a number, you know, there, there on the buildings in Sierra Point, there's some in, in buildings in Crocker Park, there are rays for certain activities. Normally, the planning commission's role here is not typically to get into the revenue aspect of, of these particular issues. So again, that's something that's not really in your purview. If you want us to research that information, you know, in our, as time permits, we could certainly do that, but it's really not germane to your task as a planning commission, so.
And the thing is that it's only limited to the commercial. So any commercial property is within five hundred feet, you mentioned? Six hundred feet? So there aren't any areas here that they can put it in the downtown Brisbane. So the only areas left will be the Marina and possibly...
Okay, thank you very much. And I just want to suggest, because there is some revenue around the Airbnb, that we should think about revenue around other...
Now, let's, let's not get very hungry about the money.
Wow. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this issue? No? Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I second that. Oh, I motion to close the public hearing.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to do the text amendment, RZ dash one fifteen, to amend Brisbane Municipal Code Title Seventeen, Chapter Seventeen Point Three Two, Section Seventeen Point Three Thirty Two pertaining to wireless communication facilities.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to items initiated by the staff. Okay, moving on to items initiated by the staff.
I don't have anything this evening.
Okay.
Same status quo with the EIR and all of that, there's nothing new.
That's true. I guess one, one thing I would point out that I expect to see the notice of preparation for the recology standalone EIR be published in the near future. Again, that will lead to some processing for the planning commission in the future, but nothing that would require any sort of immediate action on your part.
How about the committees? Any, any kind of progress in those?
You mean subcommittees?
Yeah.
I think the Sustainability Committee, they're trying to set up another meeting with the full Sustainability Committee.
But nothing, no report has come out or anything, right?
No, there's not a new document. At some point, probably in another month, there'll probably be another version of that sustainability framework that's made available. I believe that they're targeting another month or so of work. And the Green Building Ordinance issue is still trying to get a meeting set with the council liaison committee members.
And how about the, the appointment of the planning commission?
As I understand it, the, the deadline closes late next week, I believe, the 15th, maybe Wednesday. And then the council has a meeting on the 16th. And I guess at that point, they'll likely decide what they're going to do moving forward with that.
So no, no decision has been made yet?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other items initiated?
For the staff, I will give you one update about the affordable housing. City of San Jose has been sued by the Realtor Association and a couple of other groups.
The what?
City of San Jose.
Has been sued by who?
By the Realtor Association, the Santa Clara Realtor Association. And I think there are three other groups that are involved. They filed a federal lawsuit against the City of San Jose regarding the affordable housing ordinance that they have. This is the most recent one, and I think the, the hearing was scheduled, I think, next week, or maybe it was done already finished.
Is that a, to the Supreme Court, the state Supreme Court?
Yes.
Or this relates to inclusionary requirements, if I recall?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a big, big one, but that can affect us also here. And for the affordable housing, I think the main argument they were making is, is that it's too much costly for the, and also it changes the, the, the character of the, the neighborhood and all that. So there's two sides of arguments. And I think if anybody interested to, to know about it or hear about it, I think NPR Radio has a lot of discussion on that. It was in two days, I was driving and I listened to that, and there's some good arguments from both sides. And it will be interesting to see how it's going to, how the results going, what are the results going to be. And I, I think that will impact us quite a bit also here, that particular decision.
Again, this isn't anything that'll be of immediate interest or, you know, activity to the commission, but, but there's a series of these lawsuits that have already been acted upon about inclusionary requirements and particularly requiring low mod percentages in rental products. There's, and you have to do is basically justify your, you have to be able to justify that these numbers are based on some sort of impact of a project. And so the number of these, what they're called NEXUS studies, being prepared by a number of different entities to, to basically justify or bolster the argument to allow for these inclusionary requirements to remain in place. So it is really an interesting area of law that hasn't settled, and there's a lot of back and forth. And, you know, maybe in another year or so, some of the dust will settle on these things, and we may end up needing to modify our own ordinance to reflect some of these court...
I think, I think the main concern was there are not clear guidance in terms of what that means. And there's some of the, that probably will be the result of those particular hearings. And they're, both sides have good points. And if you, if any of the commissioners interested to say, to listen to that, I think you may be able to get it on, online. Go to NPR Radio and then Google for that. Okay. I have nothing else to...
Any other items from the commission?
I have a question for the staff. So where are we going to, how are we going to proceed next, now that the housing element has been approved by the council? What will, what will be the next step for, I guess, form-based code, or what is, how will that...
Yeah, to implement that requirement to rezone, what will be doing, staff be developing a work program?
What?
A work program of actually how we're going to move that forward. And the council would need to approve that work program. It'll say what kind of tasks are going to be done, what kind of budget will be allocated to that. And then once that, that work program is authorized, we'll be back here with the planning commission to, to sort of talk that through. And again, you'll be holding ultimately the hearings, you know, the formal hearings on this sort of effort, whether or not there's some community engagement that's a precursor to, to, you know, public hearings on this matter, I think is something the work program would lay out. So again, you'll be very actively involved in the actual, whether it's precise plan or the rezoning, whatever you want to call it, whatever the device is or the tool we use, the commission will be heavily involved in that process.
Do we have a forecast, some type of timeline?
We'd get the council probably in the next 45 days with some work program proposal. And then there's going to be some time involved to actually implement that. And so I, I would like to be getting some engagement in that by the end of summer. Would be kind of aggressive, but I think we really need to, to move this forward.
Are we thinking of actually coming forward with, is something similar to a form-based code?
Yes, I mean, that's still the intent, whether it's a form-based code or whether it's a, all the precise plan or a specific plan, any one of those tools will get us to the same place where the city creates the vision. For, and that's really the goal, is whatever tool we use, the city needs to provide the vision and the, the direction for any future development, of what that development looks like in the form of it. So yeah, it's going to be incorporated in whatever tool we use, that is still the goal.
I mean, there's so many, so much area that's going to be rezoned that it could change the character of the city if we're not careful, so.
In terms of the affordable, you know, the requirements for the affordable housing qualification, currently, is it what, 10% of the median income or what?
It's actually a sliding scale based on project size. Bigger projects have to provide a larger percentage.
No, no, but the person who qualifies for the...
Oh, it's, well, there's different categories of low mod. There's, it's usually the, very low is like under 50% of median income. Then there's low, which is between 50 and 80%, and then there's moderate. So really, what the state requirements all speak to, low, which is 80% or less of median income.
But the problem is in Bay Area now, the median income is, is increasing quite a bit. So if you include all the, all the people working in the Silicon Valley, if you take the median income there, much, much higher. That means even the person making $100,000 will be considered as a low income.
Absolutely, that is part of the problem. There's no doubt about it.
So that's something need to be addressed at some point, right?
Yeah, that's really done regionally, because again, it's all benchmarked on a county basis. San Mateo County's median income is different from Santa Clara, different from San Francisco. I mean, but you're right, I mean, it's, it's a problem and it's an issue, but it's benchmarked at the county level.
Should we make a...
Oh, wait a minute. I wanted to say something else under items initiated by, by the commission. I wanted to say that the BBCAG is going to be having their meeting on Tuesday, the 21st. So that's not this coming, the 14th.
Who will have?
The Bay Area BBCAG.
Oh, I see. They're still involved?
Yeah, they're meeting fewer times right now, but still several times a year.
Did you want to let people know the time and the place?
Oh, it's, excuse me, at seven to nine at, what is it? Underneath the library at, I don't remember the address.
It's a community, the center.
Yeah, it's a community center.
Also, I apologize for coming up late. I was under the weather for last whole week, and I didn't realize it was meeting time. So thanks for reminding, calling me and reminding me.
Ditto.
I rushed.
Any other items? No? Any other items?
No.
Okay. So I need to read the appeals process. Anyone may appeal the action of the planning commission to the city council not later than 15 calendar days, 10 calendar days for subdivision, and sign applications after the commission's action. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the Community Development Department at 415-508-2120. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
I motion that we adjourn to the regular meeting of April 23rd, 2015, at 7:30 PM.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.